Can everybody hear me okay? Call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge, please. Flags in the back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as roll call goes, we have two members not in attendance tonight. Jason and Mary Ellen will not be joining us. I don't think we have any other announcements, anybody? All right, moving into the agenda. Item number two, I need approval of the agenda tonight. All those in favor? Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from executive session, from the regular meeting, executive session on November 16th, as well as the Erywun Bosi's special election meeting held on November 23rd. I have a motion, a second? All those in favor? Motion carried. Tonight, we have no correspondence. Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment section, sessions. I guess, given we have a second one later on closer to the policy discussion that we'll be having, if you have any comments relative to the policy, I suggest you hold them if you could stay. We don't have a long agenda topic here. But if anybody else has anything that they'd like to add, please come up to one of the two microphones. See nothing? Guess we'll move into the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. It's my pleasure to announce that the foundation, the CSEF, Clarence Schools Enrichment Foundation, is donating over $11,000 tonight to the school district for teacher mini-grants. And Jenna De Pasquale from the foundation is here to talk to us about what that's all about, correct Jenna?
Yeah. Good evening, my name is Jenna De Pasquale and I'm the grant coordinator for the Clarence Schools Enrichment Foundation. On behalf of CSEF, I'd like to present to the Board of Education the winners of our fall 2015 biannual mini-grant program. This fall, we received 18 grant applications requesting a total of $26,083. This was, to date, the most student-centered request we have received and some of our hardest decisions to be made since the start of our program. I am proud to announce that the CSEF Board has approved the funding of 12 grants totaling $12,048.37. The Grant Selection Committee looked for grants that would enhance the educational experiences of students in the Clarence Central School District by offering ancillary enrichment in the arts, sciences, math, technology, applied career skills, and athletics. They took into consideration the number of students impacted, need of the project, and the alignment with the goals of the school district and the individual buildings within the district. I would like to, at this time, to recognize the members of our selection committee who all reside within the district. John Casey, who's not here tonight, he's a Clarence alumni. He works for Graphic Controls and he's the Director of Sales and Marketing. Joe De Pasquale, Board Member, CSEF Treasurer. He's a parent of two high school students, and my husband. Eva Mania, District Parents with Students at Ledgeview, the middle school, and the high school. I'd, at this time, like to ask Cheryl Clemens, a CSEF Board Member, Vice President Mike Fuchs, and Superintendent of Schools Dr. Hicks to please come forward and help us to present our certificates to the grant recipients. Our first grant recipients, Deborah Whirlin, Christine Hanlon, and Catherine Wright, the Fourth Annual Sixth Grade Green Day at the middle school. Scott Aspenall, Clarence Middle School News Broadcast. Kristen Lovett and Caitlin Posh, Chemistry Digital Probeware and Sensors for Labs at the high school. Ronald Kotlick, Chromebook History Digital Story Project at the high school. Michael Thomas and Kathleen Sugg. I don't think either of them could be here tonight. The Buffalo Museum of Science Dissection Outreach at the high school. Catherine Bechtel and Christopher Cole. Oh, sorry, Laura Bechtel, sorry. And Christopher Cole, Community-Based Instruction at the middle school. Cassie Lamarka and Amy Radajak, Assistive Technology and iPad Apps for the high school. George Gillum and Joseph McGreevy. And I'd also like to come up Mara Miley, the VP, Vice President of the National Art Honor Society. They are going to do an "I Wish" Band Against Bowling at the high school. Michelle Layer, Chromebooks for the Classroom at Clarence Center. Amanda Gonaz, Martin House Junior Docent Program at the middle school. Debbie Crayhan, RTI Intervention Using Aerobics Web-Based Software for Sheridan Hill. Since the beginning of our grant program in the fall of 2014. Oh, I missed somebody. Thank you. William Lampert and Susan Cor- I'm so sorry. Susan Corey, African Drumming Workshop, Harris Hill. That's why we have two people. All right. Since the beginning of our grant program in the fall of 2014, CSEF has awarded 33 grants totaling $32,271. We also, in addition to that, have purchased boys' modified basketball uniforms, cheerleading pom-poms for both the JV and Varsity High School teams, and have just recently approved the purchase of girls' modified lacrosse uniforms and a 7th grade Healthy Bodies Program through the Buffalo Museum of Science. We also have awarded scholarships to eight graduating seniors from the classes of 2014 and 2015. All of these programs have been made possible by generous donations from members of our community and through the support of our three major fundraising events during the year. On behalf of the foundation, I'd like to publicly applaud all of these individuals for developing enrichment activities for the students of Clarence. CSEF is thrilled to support these opportunities and celebrate the efforts of these district employees in their dedication and commitment to their students. Thank you.
Thank you Jenna and the foundation for all the great things you do for our kids. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, with that, we turn it over to Rick for the finance section.
We don't have too much this evening. We are working with the Comptroller's Audit Team that's been in our office for a while now and they'll probably be there a little while longer with their five-year audit. We do have a new look to the financial reports that we'll bring you in January. One of the things that we thought we would do is make them a little more streamlined. We do have a shared space for the people who do the reconciliations so that that should look a little better. And also, one of the things that we thought would be helpful would be, since the financial reports are always a month or two back reconciling, is to also include a current revenue and expenditure picture. So, we'll have that for you in January. One of the other things I did want to mention, on the warrants, you'll see some of the Bosi's claims auditor comments. One of them was about Tyler Technologies. That's the company that we purchased the GPS system. And it is working great right now. We've got screens in a few places and we could access that. We've given a password to each principal so they know where the buses are for their building. It's working very well. And I know we have someone for our Transportation Department here. Besides the locator's part of it, the GPS part of it, really the selling point in what prompted New York State to make it fully aided was the preventative maintenance piece. So, really, it sends alerts to the Transportation Department prior to a normal 90-day or whatever the checkup would be so that they know to pull a vehicle in if something is wearing or fluid levels and things like that aren't where they should be. So, it's working great right now. Lake Shore, who had this last year, claims that they had, if I remember, $250,000 worth of savings. So, we're looking forward to moving through and see how much this can actually help us, especially with keeping up with inflation. I don't know if there's any other questions on this.
Are you going to have a way to document that, those kind of savings, or is it?
It's a good question. We can certainly take a look at our parts budgets. We could certainly take a look at our overtime budgets for breakdowns. And one of the things that we want to do, and that's what Lake Shore did, is they charted their breakdowns. We know how much we've had throughout the past years. And once you get a full year or so under your belt with this. The other thing that you do is, the amount of time, dead time that a bus driver might have, now we know exactly where the bus is and all of those factors. So, we can tighten runs up a little bit. We've already been able to save money by not spending money when we've had additional placements where we now know exactly where the buses are and how to route them. You know, it's a little confusing sometimes when we're sending about 5,600 kids to over 60 sites. So, it's a complicated routing system. It's one of the reasons we went with Tyler Technologies for this system because they integrated into Versatrans, which is our routing package.
It'll be interesting to see. Anybody have any other questions? Looking for a motion to approve the F1? Motion to approve F1? Second? All those in favor? It's carried. Mr. Patac, Personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. Before you have a number of items, the first being two resignations for the purposes of retirement. The two individuals retiring have a combined 44 years of service to the Clarence Schools. You also have appointments, including regular substitute teachers, appointment of mentors, both for teachers as well as an administrator, regents review instructors, academic intervention services provider, as well as additions and one deletion to the substitute teacher list.
Relative to the substitutes, I see we added about 18 to the list this month, the approved list.
Yes.
But I also see the sign flashing in front of the high school. Where's your comfort level with how many we have today?
I'm still not comfortable. You know, a lot of these people are working in multiple districts so their availability will be limited. There's only so many people in the pool and that's the issue.
And I guess a follow-up to that. Earlier this year, maybe over the summer, we approved a higher rate of pay, following suit with some other districts. Have you seen that impact one way or another? The ability to attract substitutes?
I have not seen a change, no.
Any other questions? I need a motion for the instructional section, P1 to P3. So moved? All those in favor? It's carried. Non-instructional?
Non-instructional Personnel, you have a number of appointments, including school monitors, bus drivers and bus attendants, and modifications to the substitute list.
I guess I have another one, one other question. Number of pool monitors appointed? I think we had the question last month, does that get us whole with where we need to be?
It does. What this does is, not, even though we're appointing all these individuals, they're not available every single day of the week. And so, we use them when they are available. Many of these people are college students or have other commitments and are helping us as they can.
Thank you.
But we think we're going to have the second set of eyes in order to do all the swimming units for the kids.
accommodate both the middle school and the high school.
Yes.
I know the seniors are psyched that they get to swim one more time.
Any other questions on non-instructional?
Motion to approve P4 and P5?
All those in favor? Carried. Dr. Hicks, Special Needs?
I will pause briefly here for any of the teachers or CSEF personnel that didn't desire to stick around for the rest of the meeting. If you'd like to exit, we'll very quickly move on to the next thing. Anybody? I knew there would be some.
Okay. With regard to the Committee on Special Education, there were 27 meetings in this past month, mostly for students who are new to the buildings or who had a requested change in their individual education plan. Nothing really unusual. And there were six preschool special education meetings, which is a light month for us. Things will start to pick up with annual reviews after the first of the year.
Any questions? Need a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? It's carried. All right, moving into the Board Development section, we have a number of requested field trips to start us off.
Some trips to be approved all overnight. The indoor track team to the Dartmouth Relays, which is in New Hampshire. The Varsity Ice Hockey Team to a tournament in Potsdam. Students to participate in the New York State Band Directors Association Honor Band in Liverpool. The Syracuse University Public Affairs Course. And the Academy of Business and Finance Kids get a trip financed to Albany by our local legislator, Jane Corwin. And that will take place in March. And then the Drama Club and the National Art Honor Society have their biannual trip to New York City listed. All the details on these particular trips have been provided to the Board of Ed. Just one thing, Mr. Vice President. We did cancel the trip to Costa Rica because there is a overseas worldwide travel alert and we don't feel comfortable sending our kids while that alert is on. That does not expire until the end of February. The Costa Rica trip, which had been previously approved by the Board, was supposed to be over February break. So, I'm going to meet with the advisor and those parents tomorrow night to try to figure out another course of action. These trips are all domestic. So far, there's no internal New York State terrorist threat so we would encourage the approval of these particular trips.
The one that, I guess, requires a sizable contribution from the student is the New York City trip. But I see that does have insurance coverage if something were to happen.
We asked on those trips for the kids and the parents to either get trip insurance or have a full understanding that we could cancel because of worldwide events.
Any questions on field trip items covering B1 to B5? Motion to approve? I have a second? All those in favor? Moving on to item B6. Again, this is a second time on the agenda, the Student Gender Identity Policy. Again, it's on the agenda because we tabled or postponed action at the last meeting. We did not intend, as a board, to discuss it this evening but we will have a public comment session commencing after this. Just wanted to make a few remarks, just to clarify the situation relative to where we're at as a district, relative to this policy. I know other districts have been in the news. So, bear with me as I'm not the best order within the group. The Clarence Central School District strives to create an environment free of discrimination and harassment and has existing policies in place today to accomplish this objective. One such policy, and the most recent that I recall we passed, was the Dignity for All Students Act, DASSA, which was passed in 2012. And although the language is a little bit more general, covers this topic that I believe this particular proposed policy covers. As a board, one of the primary roles we have is to approve policy, which provides guidance for the district, Dr. Hicks, and the rest of the staff to enact procedures. Absent that, they will enact procedures given the policies that are in place today. Why we are here today is, and the agenda item, is the New York State SED proposed guidance to all districts that they adopt a policy that they felt provided guidelines that were aligned with both New York State and federal law. We, as a Clarence District, are kind of digesting that and trying to get all the information available before we just go and approve it. So, that brings us to where we're at today. As a board, we're in the process of gathering facts. That includes us looking at research ourselves and educating ourselves, seeking legal advice, seeking community input, which we will again do this evening, debating and discussing the level of specificity of language and so forth, and talking about practicality of various implementation. The other thing we will look to have members participate in is Eriewun Bosi's. In early January, I believe it's January 6th, is going to offer a forum for board members and district administrators to, again, have some experts in attendance to advise us and educate us on this, the topic within this policy. So, with that said, I would open it up to public comment session. We have two microphones at either side of the library. If you wouldn't mind stepping up to the microphone, name and address, keeping your comments directed at the board as a whole. Again, to note what I mentioned at the onset, two board members are not in attendance this evening. Allowing them to hear the feedback. If you go to the microphone, we'll get a good recording of it for them to watch and hear later on. So, with that, I open the floor to anybody who wishes to address the board.
My daughters use the bathrooms, they use the locker rooms, they change for swim, they change for gym. And I am not here to judge transgender individuals at all. What I am strongly asking you to do is to not allow a boy, no matter if he identifies himself as a girl or as a boy, to change in front of my daughters. That's what I strongly ask you to do, to protect my daughters also. And I don't want my daughters changing in front of them either. I am glad to hear that you're looking for legal counsel. I trust you guys. I'm glad that you're taking time and you're hearing from us. I appreciate that. The policy that I read states that all students need to be safe and have a supportive educational environment to progress academically and developmentally. The district is committed to fostering a safe learning environment for all students. That's what the policy says. The word "all" is used twice there. And I can guarantee you that all students will not feel comfortable or supported if there is a member of the opposite sex in their locker room or their bathroom. I believe that if you pass this policy, you will be sacrificing the safety and comfort of a large majority of students for the sake of a few students. And I strongly urge you to find acceptable alternatives. I don't know what they are. That is your tough job. I would not want to be in your seats. Find safe and comfortable alternatives for all students. I ask that you please hold off voting on this issue until there can be a more public forum where more parents in the district are informed about this issue and that they can share their thoughts and concerns also. Thank you.
Hi. So, my name is Katrina Webster. I'm a Clarence graduate. I graduated around 10 years ago in the early 90s. And I have a little story to tell you today. And my story began in this building when I met a good friend, Jane, in this very building. And I touched base with Jane recently because Jane is now John. And this is a Clarence graduate, someone who started elementary school with me, graduated, and is a transgender male. So, the reason I touched base with him is because what I wanted to know for myself was, does this policy actually help transgender people? Would they want to use a different bathroom or a different locker room? And would it have a significant impact on their lives? And the resounding answer that I got from John was yes, absolutely. His life would have been completely different had he had support and help all those years. I'd like to share some of his words with you. He wanted to remain anonymous, obviously. But he had a lot of really interesting things to say that I think are really important for us to understand. So, what he said was, "In my case, I knew that I was a male trapped in a female body at seven years old." That's a first or second grader, "in this building." "And it was very confusing and lonely childhood because I didn't understand." "Before puberty, I was called 'him' by strangers and it felt great." "I had a substitute teacher once in this school." "We used to line up boys in one line, girls in another line, who told me I was in the wrong line with the girl. She put me in the boy line." Got it, could tell, something. "And it felt good to be in the boy line." "I was always attracted to females but I never felt like a lesbian." "I was making stand-to-pe devices at seven years old and my first one was a length of hose that was broken in our garage." "I used to get into fights with my parents whenever we had to get dressed up because I felt like a drag queen in a dress." "I used to wear my brother's underwear, play hockey with the boys, hated getting girly gifts, et cetera." "In 5th grade, my parents bought me a button-down shirt and a tie. It felt so good to wear it. I wore it to school and I was made fun of in that hallway right over there." "My life was a constant struggle. I felt isolated and lonely. I struggled with depression and anxiety, which I tried to escape by turning to drugs." "High school was the most difficult part for me so far. After high school, I bowed my chest so it looked like I had a flat chest. In my 30s, I found a doctor in Buffalo who specializes in gender dystopia, or just, excuse me, dysphoria, in his 30s." "It's a long, it was a long process to transition. I had to see my doctor for regular counseling, live as a male for a year, which I'd already been doing, and things like using the men's room, using the locker rooms, changing my name and my gender even on my birth certificate. It's also a process that includes hormones and sometimes surgery. I remember my mom helping me remove my bandages after my chest reconstruction surgery and looking at myself saying, 'This is amazing, this feels so good.'" So, something that John wanted me to emphasize to you today is that everyone's journey is different. And something that the policy says that is super important is that it's on a case-by-case basis. And I think that's really important for us to remember. And what John emphasized is that some people choose to undergo hormones, some people choose to have surgeries, others don't. There might be transgender students who want to use a different locker room, there might not be. But the policy doesn't say that we're just going to all of a sudden, one day, put a student in a different locker room. The other thing that John emphasized is that this is a very long process that people go through. So, if a student in our district comes in and feels like they are perhaps the wrong gender, it's not going to be the next day that they're using a bathroom or a locker room. That, I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, it might be more toward the middle or end of their journey. Now, John gave me a couple of, a couple of great websites that I looked at that were helpful. One of them was called GLAD, G-L-A-A-D. I think it was...
Dot org?
Yeah, dot org. That one had some great terminology that I'd recommend anyone take a look at. The other one was ftmguide.org, Female-to-Male.org. What I found really interesting about that particular website was that it was a guide for females who were transitioning to males. And there was a big section on locker rooms and bathrooms. And one of the things that it focused on was, of course, protecting yourself when you're going through that transition because what a major thing to switch from going to the women's locker room to the men's locker room. And how to do it discreetly and also not at the expense of everyone else in the locker room. It had locker room etiquette, it had all sorts of things that it talked about. So, I think that's a great resource and we might want to take a look at that. The other thing, and Ananda touched on this too, one of the things in the policy states that it is, all students have to be protected. So, the way that I read that, and I'm hoping that it's something that you'll discuss, is that if we do have a student who's going through a transition and wants to start using a different locker room, that also the children who are in that locker room have a right to accommodations as well. If it's something where it's not going to be private or whatever, who knows? If it's something where it's not going to be private or whatever, who knows what it looks like. It's going to look like something different for everyone. But I'm hoping that all students will be accommodated if necessary. So I guess my main thing, I mean, gender dysphoria is real. It's not a fad, it's not a phase. I mean, someone who was in the 80s in this building is a transgender male, so it's been around. What I thought was really interesting is that John likened it to a birth defect that needed medical attention, finally got that attention. So just like, you know, our Americans with Disabilities Act, any of the acts that we enact to protect our most vulnerable citizens, we need to make sure that we are protecting our transgender students from discrimination and that we're protecting all of our students, not just the many, but also the few with it. So thank you.
Hi, Alan Bedenko. I live on Via Sumato. I spoke to the board last month about this issue. I just wanted to restate a couple of things based on some of what I've heard. The first is, like we discussed last month, bathrooms shouldn't even be an issue. If a boy who is transitioning to female is using a female bathroom, he's going to be in the stall, she's going to be in a stall. If it's vice versa, they're going to be in a stall too. So nobody's going to see anything that they shouldn't see or don't want to see. So that shouldn't even be a problem. I think a lot of what's going on is that people are likening transgender to crossdressing, and it's not that. Just like Katie just described, it's a completely different thing. It's a psychological thing, it's a physiological thing, it's much more complicated than just waking up one day and deciding, "I'm going to use the other locker room." As for the locker rooms, as Katie stated, the policy is very, first of all, the policy merely restates federal regulations, federal statutes, state statutes, state regulations. So regardless of whether or not this board passes the policy in the way that it's stated in the proposed language or with some modifications to that language, it really doesn't matter because you guys are going to have to follow the law and the regulations no matter what. So this is kind of a little bit of an academic exercise. However, with that being said, the policy is very clear. Ninety percent of the text has to do with record-keeping and pronouns, okay? Which I don't think anybody cares about. Really what we're talking about, if you want to drill down to the issue, is locker rooms. Locker rooms can be handled any way, any one of a number of ways that is respectful not only to the student who is transgender, but also to the student who is not and feels uncomfortable. It's there in the policy. Any student who feels uncomfortable, doesn't matter who. So I think the policy as stated, it's fair, it's equitable, it calls, it brings into issue anybody's concerns, whether it's a transgender kid or a kid who is uncomfortable in a locker room situation with a transgender kid. It's up to the school, to the district, to the teachers, to the guidance counselors to figure out ways to make it comfortable for everybody, and it's in the policy as stated. It's frankly not controversial at all. It should be passed as simply as it was in Hamburg, and we shouldn't make this into Lancaster. Thanks.
My name is Sean Cronin. I live on Clove Leaf Circle, and I'm a junior at Clarence High School. I was interested in this discussion after I watched the video of last month's board meeting, and the one consensus that I found among everybody was, "We should ask what the students think, and what the students think is what matters the most." So to that end, me and a handful of my friends drew up a petition, and we attached the policy to the back of each petition. We took out some copies, and we surveyed our friends. And just in the halls or during our lunch periods, we would ask people, "What do you think? Would you want to sign this petition to support this policy?" And I would say the overwhelming majority of people that at least I asked said yes. And we were met with every kind of response, from wholehearted agreement to people swearing at us telling us to go away. But we were able to, we were managed, we did manage to bring together almost 500 signatures from people that we knew. This is in no way a poll or a survey. There was no scientific, specific protocol followed. This is just what we were able to compile in the few weeks that we had. So if Dr. Hicks or anybody would like to...
Thank you.
My name is Aiden Beistrack, and I am one of the reasons that the Clarence Schools' policy was introduced. Let me tell you a little about myself. I'm 15 and from the graduating class of 2018. I'm a good student, and I've made a positive impact on my school. I'm on honor roll, and I am also in many clubs. Science Olympia interacts with our Gay Street Alliance, in which I'm the secretary. As Sean mentioned, him and then a lot of people in GSA started carrying around these petitions that were just asking, like, "Would you be comfortable if a transgender person was using the same locker rooms and bathrooms as you?" And as he said, a lot of people said yes. And technically, there's nothing in place saying that I or any other transgender person cannot use the bathrooms or locker rooms as a gender we identify as because New York has set guidelines saying that schools should let transgender students use the facilities as a gender identity they identify as. However, it would be a good idea for the school district to explicitly state that we are allowed to use the proper restrooms to help limit factors such as harassment. Currently, I, myself, may be one of the first, obviously not the first, but one of the first openly transgender people to walk these hall, the hallways of Clarence Schools, but I definitely won't be the last. Statistically speaking, about 0.3% of individuals in the United States today is transgender. That's three in every thousand, and there are about 400 students in each grade at CHS. 400 times four is 1,600 students at any given time. So at any given time at Clarence High School, there are about four or five transgender individuals out of the closet or not. You may be thinking, "Why should we care?" And I, to an extent, understand where the confusion can stem from. It's hard to understand what it's like to be an oppressed people when you're not in that group. So let me try to explain it. When I would use the women's facilities, I'd experience a sensation of dysphoria, as most transgender people do. Dysphoria, in this sense, is discomfort with your body. When I'd walk into the women's locker room, I'd feel like I didn't belong, because I don't. A boy does not belong changing in front of a group of girls. Who in here would argue any differently? Though some may argue that the nurse's office would be a suitable place for a person of any gender to change clothes or use the bathroom, and theoretically speaking, it is a great idea. However, at CHS, it's not practical in any sense when discussing changing facilities for gym class. At the high school, the nurse's office is a good two- to three-minute walk from a gym, at least for me because I have short legs. Given that we are in fact given five minutes to change, I, for one, would not enjoy spending half of hour, a lot of time, just walking to my changing facilities. Plus, this potential solution does not make any sense in any way for the swimming unit. I'm sorry, but I'm not walking halfway across the school in a wet bathing suit, or a dry one for that matter. What we are asking for is not revolutionary, it is not a bold request. It is me, a boy, asking to be allowed permission to use the boys' locker rooms and bathrooms. If I was cisgender, i.e. not trans, people would think you were nuts to offer any other arrangements. Being transgender is not a phase. Being transgender is a diagnosable physiological disorder. That's right, a disorder. Call it, if it so pleases you, an illness. Dysphoria is one of the symptoms, a nagging feeling protruding through your mind, telling me and other trans guys, "People aren't going to take you seriously. They will always think of you as a confused little girl." But you know what we do to sick people in America? We give them the option to buy ridiculously overpriced drugs to soothe their ailments. That's what the hormones are that transgender people take. It's our medicine, just like someone who's diabetic would need to take insulin for their whole life. You're transgender for life. Being transgender is not a fad. Yes, this and the last generation have brought a sudden influx of openly transgender individuals, but the key word is openly. Transgender people have always existed, it was just that you'd have to remain closeted for fear of persecution. I think back to June 26th this year. It was the beginning of summer. I was psyched. I survived my freshman exams. I was drunk on the liberation that comes with each summer. And I remember, around 9:30 in the morning, I was sitting at my kitchen table eating breakfast when my friend texted me. She sent me a link with the caption, "I'm so happy." I clicked the link, and there was an article with the headline, "The Supreme Court has just ruled that gay marriage is legal nationwide." I was ecstatic. The first thing I did was run outside and call my best friend to tell her the news. I then, over the next few days, began seeing a lot of people talking about how the next step on, quote-unquote, "the gay agenda" should be focusing on transgender rights and protection, something the United States currently lacks. New York State is one of the worst when it comes to protection laws for transgender individuals. So why don't we give them a little nudge in the right direction by passing this policy? This is my future. This is your children's future. Because I'm transgender, I'm destined to have many hardships in my life. Please, let me be a kid first. I'm not asking for much. I just want the assurance that I can change with others in my same gender in gym class. This is my future. Please don't be on the wrong side of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe, Joe Cronin. I live in Clove Leaf Circle. I have two kids in the Clarence Schools. I'm a physician in the community, have been for 20 years now. In my prior career as a primary care doctor, I had the opportunity to work very closely with the transgender community. It wasn't really something I sought out. I didn't open a transgendered practice. But I happened to come upon several transgendered patients, and the reason they came to me was because I would examine them, and some of their physicians would not. They would actually refuse to examine some of their patients. I couldn't imagine a doctor doing that, but apparently they were. So in working with these people, you know, it's, as has been said before, it's not a choice, it's not a fad, this is who these people are. It's not going to go away, and it's not something that happens overnight. So I have to say, when I, very often we do things in life as rote, and we did the pledge here when we came in. And I tell you, it affected me quite differently because of the context that we were in here tonight. And when we say liberty and justice for all, you know, that, those words really had true meaning for me tonight. It wasn't just a rote statement. I think that's something we really need to take to heart. So if we can just get through the issues of the locker room, I really think that's the biggest issue here. And I'll say, it's an issue for non-transgendered people too. As you know, I'm a pediatrician, I'm a board-certified pediatrician, and I've talked with lots of kids, and not transgendered kids. Everybody's uncomfortable in the locker room. Everybody grows up at different rates, different speeds, somebody's got things somebody doesn't else have, you know? And, you know, "When am I going to get those?" And so, this is for everybody. This, everybody's uncomfortable. Everybody should be discreet. Nobody should be looking at everybody else. Maybe that's what we should be teaching all of our kids, is be discreet when changing in the locker room. You don't have to have a towel, an awkward towel, changing in the locker room. You could have a beach cover-up and change underneath that, and everybody could have that. There are simple solutions to these things, and we just need to not leave anybody behind. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness in considering this matter.
Hi, my name's Lisa Conroy. I have two daughters, one at the high school, one at the middle school. And I didn't even know this topic was on the agenda tonight. I came because my daughter's the vice president of National Art Honor Society, and Mr. Gillum was getting a grant. But this is an issue that is so important, and I try to raise my two daughters to be open-minded, and this is not an issue that they need to be protected from. They need to learn to accept other people, their peers, to love other people. I knew Aiden last year. I chaperoned the orchestra trip to Chicago. And Aiden has come such a long way and is such an amazing person, just the few times that I've seen him this year, and the growth that he has made as he's made this change. My daughters, also, one of their best friends is transgender, and I have learned so much from my children. I have learned acceptance, I've learned the proper pronouns, I've learned how to make everyone feel comfortable, no matter what background, what lifestyle, what faith. And I just want us to be that open-minded community that I know that we can be, that encompasses everyone and accepts everyone. And that's my hope for our community.
Hi. My name is Kathy Wild. I live on Fairway Circle. I think, I think one of the issues that people are having and that I think, you know, we do need to address in the policy is the idea of people being exposed to other people's genitalia without their consent, okay? I fully support anyone who is transgender. I fully support, obviously against any kind of bullying or harassment. I do have some concerns about the locker rooms because there is an issue of consent, that if someone, if, I'll just use a girl as the example. If a girl doesn't want to see a penis, she shouldn't have to see one, okay? I mean, this is just, this is how we've taught our kids for years, what is appropriate, what isn't appropriate when it comes to privacy. If there, I would just like to make sure that there is some sort of, something in the policy that acknowledges that consent, okay? I feel, one of the reasons I feel strongly about this is I have a daughter, she has Down Syndrome, she'll be at the school next, the high school next year. And I don't want her exposed to male nudity. It's not appropriate for her developmentally, and it would be, I'm afraid it would be confusing to her, okay? If it becomes normal for her to be exposed to male genitalia in her school locker room, how is she going to know that's not supposed to be normal at the Y? She doesn't, she's not going to understand the difference between a transgender person and someone who may not be transgender, and who just might not be there for the right I hope people don't think I'm fear-mongering, but people with developmental disabilities are four to 10 times as likely to be victims of sexual assault. I don't think any transgender person, okay, especially at Clarence, would ever be a danger to my daughter. But what I'm concerned about is confusion. I think this confusion would only happen if it was an issue of nudity. Okay? I'm not talking about, "No, we cannot have any transgender person in the other locker room." I don't think that's right. But I do have an issue with privacy, and I think as the mother of a child with a disability, I have the right to say, "I don't want my child exposed to something that she's not ready to be exposed to," okay? In all other ways, I support this policy 100%. I believe, as Alan said, that accommodations can be made to ensure that these types of privacy issues are handled. That's all I'm asking for, is to keep those privacy issues handled, especially because we do have, you know, a significant amount of kids in our district with intellectual disabilities. We have to keep their needs in mind too, to make sure that we don't put them in a confusing situation. I hope that makes sense. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. San Antonio, Salt Road. To piggyback on what you were saying, thank you, and Ananda as well, this is not about a transgender child, what I'm speaking of. I don't, I honestly don't think if somebody is legitimately transgender and they're in the locker room, they're gawking at my daughter, it's not about him or her. It's about our daughter. We have a daughter, you have daughters, and we just want to ask you to keep in mind to provide accommodations so that someone like our daughter that does not want to be exposed to the genitalia of a male, that they should not have to do that. And that's what we're asking, please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Hi, I am Grayson. I am also a transgender student at CHS. And what I think people forget sometimes is that... Um, and what I think people forget sometimes is that genitalia does not define someone. Um, so, like, with the issue of, you know, being exposed to something else in the locker room, that could also be turned. So, you could also say, well, if, well, you, you, I mean, you could also say, you know, if someone is not heterosexual in the locker room, they could be looking at someone else. But, um, that's just, that's just not how it is. Um, transgender students should be allowed to change in the locker room that they feel they should be in. And it, it really shouldn't matter what parts they have, 'cause that's just not, it's just not the only thing you should be concentrating on. You should be concentrating on the person rather than what kind of body they have.
Hi, I'm Dave Clemmons. We have four children in the school district, two in high school and, and two in elementary school. And, um, I would say, first and foremost, that our obligation as parents is to protect our children, no matter what the affront may be. Whether it's a perceived affront, whether it's a real affront, we have an obligation to our children to protect them. Uh, we personally don't rely on the state to protect our kids and we won't rely on the state to protect our kids. We'll protect our kids because we know what's right for our kids. There's no one else in the room who knows what's right for our kids. That said, I would suggest that the board look at the problem for more from a discrimination policy standpoint, which is already in place, because nobody should be discriminated against in the school or wherever they are. This particular regulation, if you will, was an executive order promulgated under the Americans with Disability Act, which asks for or requires a reasonable accommodation. Reasonable accommodation for everybody. There are kids in the, in the district. There are teachers in the district. There are all kinds of employees in the district who have problems with drugs, alcohol, depression, sexual abuse, felonies. These are all real problems to these people and they deserve the same amount of privacy and consideration that anybody else does. Not saying that transgender is not an issue. It is an issue. But so is everything else I mentioned. So, all I would ask is that a holistic approach against any kind of bullying or any kind of affronts to students, employees, whatever, whomever, that be considered and that be reinforced throughout the schools. If you really want people to be treated equally and effectively, then the program has to be managed for all.
Do we have any other comments this evening?
Hi, I'm April Crantz. I live in Clarence on Lap Road. And I also, um, have a concern regarding the privacy, um, aspect of the policy. I have two girls as well as a boy. My boy's in middle school, my girls are in elementary school. Um, and I in no way, um, have anything against transgender students as well or want anyone to be discriminated against, whether it's the heterosexual children or the transgender. So, my concern, as well as some of the other moms here, is the privacy issue in the locker rooms. Um, we, like, like the man before me stated, we all raise our children differently with different standards and morals. And I feel that we should all be respected, whether our morals are that we do not want our daughters to be exposed to male genitalia or that we don't care, if we're okay with that. I feel that we should all be respected and I pray and hope that we can come up with some resolutions and some solutions so that the kids who ex- maybe just expect all girls to be in the locker room feel very comfortable or as comfortable as possible changing. Um, and I really like that idea about the beach cover-ups. You know, I, I, I asked my son, my, um, thirteen-year-old son, if he would feel comfortable if a girl or girls, you know, um, girl genitalia, whatever you wanna call it, girl bodies would be changing in front of him. And he said he would be very uncomfortable. Um, so, I do have a privacy issue as well and I do not wanna discriminate against anyone, whether, whether it's male, female, or on the road to one or the other. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Danita Kimbrescharani and I am a freshman at Clarence High School. And, um, not gonna lie, I'm kinda just gonna wing this. But, um, one thing I guess I kinda really wanna say is, um, well, just a couple of things, I guess, actually. I, with the privacy issue, I feel like, as the board, like, and it is really hard, like, someone said, like, in the beginning, is, this is really hard for you guys sitting in your seats, 'cause you guys are gonna mainly help in the decision of how we are pretty much gonna continue living our lives within the school walls until we graduate and become adults and do the rest of our life, whatever we're gonna do with that. And, um, I personally am not transgender, but my identity fits under the term. And I'm not gonna get into exactly my identity of it, 'cause it can get really confusing and it's just not really, uh... The issue, I guess I'm just trying to say, is that one thing that I know a lot, like, other transgender people, um, or anyone who falls under the umbrella term transgender, um, feels is dysphoria. And it's such, just, it's an awful, awful feeling. Um, it's like people who are really anxious on getting secure about themselves, they will feel uncomfortable in that moment. They'll feel, they can feel isolated. And, but I feel as if dysphoria almost takes it to another level because it's not just being anxious about something, it's being anxious about who you are as a person. And it's a horrible, horrible feeling to not love yourself, pretty much. Not accept yourself and how you are. And I guess I do just wanna tell some people to keep in mind, and you guys, that we may be children, but that doesn't mean we don't, we aren't responsible for things we do at times and that we don't know who we are. Um, children can be naive, but they're not oblivious to their feelings, um, emotionally, mentally, um, physically even. And, um, I just guess I do wanna, I do wanna keep in mind that we know who we are. Maybe for some people, this is just a temporary feeling. But for the majority of people, how you identify as now, how you feel about yourself now is how you're gonna feel about long before then. And it, it would just mean so much to me, as well as many other people, if this, if you, uh, guys will help us better to be comfortable with ourselves, because it is really hard to be told that we have to do something that just doesn't make us uncomfortable. And I understand that there are parents here, there are other kids in the school even, not just adults, that can be uncomfortable with this. But I do feel like privacy is something you can come to terms with. I just really wanna bring to mind that these are our feelings and this is what we're gonna be doing until we're seventeen, eighteen. And it would just be very great if you can give us a little nudge into the right direction of our childhood and how we enjoy it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Clemmons. I live on Ransom Road. And I just ask, um, I am a co-president at Harris Hill, um, PTO. And I got an email last night and a phone call at about five-thirty this afternoon saying that, um, people didn't realize this was being discussed or that this was even being considered. And I think this is a small representation of our school district. And I just ask that you do a better job of informing the public that this is going to be presented so that we can have people come here educated and informed to discuss this reasonably. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mara Mealy. I'm a junior at Clarence High School. And I wasn't planning on speaking about this topic today, but it is something I feel strongly about. And as Sean Cronin mentioned to me today, every voice counts. I have quite a few friends who are transgender and I gotta give them a lot of credit. It's, it's a very tough thing to deal with. And when we're speaking of consent in the locker room, the locker room is always awkward. As a middle schooler, when it came around to the swim unit, I didn't wanna see anyone's genitalia, female or male. So, I went into the stall or everyone was reasonably discreet about it and I didn't see anything. Problem solved. There are personal ways to solve this issue of consent and privacy that individuals may have without having to basically tell an entire group of people that they cannot use the facilities that they identify with. If you are a male, whether it be trans or cis, you are a male, so you should, it's simple. Use the facilities. And if an individual has a problem with that, there are way simpler ways to deal with it. Locker rooms are uncomfortable, no matter what. So, you don't have to deal with it in a way that is discriminatory, I guess. We can achieve comfort for everyone without having to make so big of a deal with it. I don't know. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Any other comments? I thank everybody for, uh, the time and the input and we'll take that back. And obviously, we have two, two other board members who'll be with us at next month's meeting and we'll continue the discussion. Uh, with that said, uh, moving on to the committee hole items. Uh, we have a few meetings coming up. The next scheduled board meeting is January eleventh at Harris Hill Elementary at seven PM. Uh, we have a board retreat on Saturday, the twenty-third of January. And we have our first budget session of the next cycle on January twenty-fifth. There's no other questions or comments?
I would just make a comment, Mike, that, you know, I think somebody made a comment that we haven't done a good job, you know, publicizing, uh, this policy that we're considering. We need your help. Maybe you can talk to your friends, your neighbors and let them know and so we can, you know, get as much input as we can. Thanks.
Thanks, Roger. Okay, with that, I move, uh, to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the CSEA and the CAA. Motion. Second. All those in favor? We adjourn.